Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flags in the back.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for coming, everybody. We definitely got some rain last night, didn't we?
Yeah.
Holy Toledo. Roll call, please.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Joanne Sharkey.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Arnie Bryson.
Here.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
Here.
Sandy Kufa.
Here.
Okay, we're all here, common for present. Bill's payable, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Bill's payable for $115,009.51.
Support. Okay, a motion is support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Joanne Sharkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Arnie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Sandy Kufa.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, supervisor's report. I'll try to be brief, but that doesn't guarantee anything. Actually, the water's down about four inches from our last meeting, so that's a good thing. Our August level, though, is actually higher than the August level in the record season of 86, so we still have high water, but I know that four inches gave us a lot of relief. We still do have sandbags, the demand has dropped off for them, and so that's a good thing, too. As you might recall, I had those water diverter tubes, we were able to buy some at discount rate and pass them along to homeowners. I do have about 30 of them left, and I have a waiting list of people who would like to buy them. I'm gonna be emailing them out to the people tomorrow, and hopefully, I gotta create bills and everything for them, and let them know, and we probably will have a few more left over from what I have that people have reached out to me. But yeah, so that's a good thing. We sold a lot of them, a lot of people were able to take advantage of that program, so... We did build up, as I reported to you guys last meeting, we built up Columbine Road, at least to the DNRs to get their field office open. They do have an event coming here this next weekend, hunt and duck calling and swap event there, and so that's good, they're happy for that, and actually, you know, it took a lot of stone, I didn't get a count yet, but we actually had some stone money left on our budget, so it's not gonna hit us as bad as I initially thought. I don't have a number on that yet, but it's not, because I was estimating it would take about 10,000 or 1,000 yards, which would have been about 11, 12 grand. And as you recall, two of the county road, they agreed to just charge us for the stone and not the labor, so that was a good thing, too. We did, and we still are compiling expenses of how much all this high water activity has cost the township, and there was a letter submitted to the governor requesting a state of emergency, and that will be, we'll talk more about that on our agenda. We have a resolution to pass in support of that on all the expenses that... Yeah, it was a lot of money, so... The water and fire departments worked together to deploy a 250-foot coffer dam, actually right over here, from behind the Lions Hall here up to La Croix, and in doing so, we were able to help out three residents also. And what enabled us to do is pump this area dry, because we were about two inches to have it, of water level, to having serious problems both in this building and the fire department. And we got that deployed, and it's worked out well. I'd like to actually give a personal thanks to Dennis Tomaski with Five Lakes Construction for helping us out, he did a lot of work to make that happen and get it dried out for us. So far, our flood costs, and this is from when I typed this out last, there's more, but our sewer and wire department, between labor and expenses, has been about $220,000 and about $143,000 out of our general fund, and we do have some extra costs we're figuring out. We did have a lot of sewer infiltration, and so our sewer, you know, the cost we have to pay for our sewer water's gone up, and we're figuring out the difference from what it was last year to this year. But I mean, we were, for a while, we were going, just our township was 2 million gallons a day, and most of that was from people pumping into it, or there was broken pipes under people's homes or something where it was just draining into it, and we went around and secured a lot, actually, all of it. And we secured a lot of our manholes and worked real hard to button that up. Also, we did, as you recall, the fire hydrants we have over here on the island, we got about 10 of them that are underwater, and we're gonna do a seawall, we did the first one today. He's got the seawalls in, and we're gonna try to pump that out tomorrow, and hopefully we'll get that down, be able to raise up the fire hydrants and then fill it in to make them safe. And we did the, actually, the first one today, it looked like it worked out well. Our auditors have been in, and we've been very busy with them, and things are going well, and we have a little bit on that on our agenda tonight, too. Met with, on the sewer interceptor on the mainland, as you recall, we met, we decided to go with OHM as the engineering firm. We met with them to define the scope and the process of fixing the sewer interceptor, and as I have, will beginning agreement, but I actually have it, I'll email it out to you guys, it'll be on our next meeting's agenda. And we have the agreement for us to go into, to get this thing fixed, and we're splitting it up between two projects. First, from Zobel Court, that's over with the beginning of the township on the west side by the old, or it's called On the Rocks Now, the restaurant, to Blue Bill, that's a forced main sewer interceptor, and that's gonna be one project. And the more time critical will be the first project, it goes from Blue Bill, just the other side of Colony, all the way through the township along M29 to the wastewater treatment plant. And so we're gonna do those as two different projects, and you know, because we haul all IRA townships, we'll call them just fluids, and so the engineering part will be split 50/50 on that, and so we have agreement with them where we're going to pre-fund the engineering costs, because there's a lot of unknowns. We don't know exactly what it's gonna cost yet, we're gonna pre-fund it and then start the engineering and the testing and see what we have to do to make this thing right and probably end up lining a good portion of it. So I'll have that in front of you at the next meeting. Our project on the Colony Water Main is almost done. We have some landscape issues and a few smaller issues we're tidying up. We still have money that we're holding back from the contractor until everything's done, go through the punch list and make sure it's all done. And they are going through that, and actually, I think they're gonna be planning, doing the landscaping and planning here real soon. They're concerned, well, for a while, it was all in their waters, and you throw seed down, it doesn't last too long, and they're waiting for, you know, it's tough to grow grass, because hydro spray that they do in towards the end of January, they said the magic date is August 15th, so for that to take. Let's see, oh, we had raft off last week over in Musqueamoune Bay, we had a lot, there was a lot of boats there. We ever get a count, I guess an 8500, is that a good guess, you think?
Probably.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of boats, and surprisingly enough, we only had seven transports to the ER, I say only, because usually we're 20-plus, you know, 20 to 30. And there were mostly lacerations and that type of thing. Wanted to give a special thanks to Dan and Mary Lou Smith and Wendy Trudell, they let us use our property for command center and staging, and also my brother, hate to do it, but I gotta thank Bob Bryson for helping us with that, too. You don't know how much that pains me. We finished up Music in the Park, our Music in the Parks series, and that went well, and special thanks to Cindy Babish for pulling that off, we had lots of great entertainment. We do have a band playing at Brown's Field September 14th, it's starting at 6 o'clock that night, and it's in conjunction with Pig Rose that the Harsons Island Association is putting on, and so that's always a good event. I think we have Renegade playing, and it's a good band. And let's see, oh, I need to talk about garbage for a little bit. Two things, you know, we're just continuing the garbage on a lot of the, or all the out islands, and I knew going in that that might be an issue on Lug Island, because, you know, the program kinda worked there and there only. There's 15 homes there, we have about 340 people total in the out islands that were just doing the garbage. And I was thinking earlier about, well, we could do a special assessment for them and they could pay the dumpster, and that is a lot of paperwork and headaches, so I actually, I was talking to Sheri earlier today about it, and I did get phone calls from four or five of the people there, they want to keep the garbage. So we just had a talk about today, we might be letting them stay on, and we'll charge them the Russell Island rate, which I can't remember off the top of my...
$137.
$137, and we'd have the dumpster there, and we'll put a lock and key on that dumpster also, so it'll be for those residents and to kinda curtail it. And so I did talk to one or two of the people there today, I'm gonna talk to a few more, I'm gonna get some numbers together and brunch it, see what that one container costs us. And I was looking at getting some containers at the end of private roads down the flats, and I had a couple of people giving me quotes on building something, and they haven't come in yet, and I was actually online looking at a couple of things, and I thought, oh, you know, they'd make like a dock box, a plastic dock box, and that would be relatively inexpensive, but my experience of those, the wind blows those tops off, and it gets windy there, so I mean, I kinda put that one on the back burner, we're gonna get some quotes on some heavier duty bins made out there. So, but I did clear it with the road commission, they're okay for us to put it out there. On Harsons Island Nature Parks slash kayak launch, we're doing the grant process, and I just got an email that the DNR did approve our agreement, that we approved it at our last meeting. I'm waiting on, they're reviewing our 40-year title search, and once they check that box, we can go ahead and get a new appraisal done on it, and once I have that, then we're solid, they're gonna give us the green light. I'm actually contacted a couple appraisal, appraiser companies, they're not allowed to start the appraisal process until they approve the 40-year title, so, but I got them waiting, and they know it could be coming, so there won't be a huge wait for that. Lot of other stuff going on, one thing I wanted to mention, Wednesday the 28th, we have, we do these slow rolls where we do bike trips, and they're very casual, and we've been averaging 40, 50 people. Wednesday the 28th, we're gonna do Harsons Island, it's gonna start at the Clay Township Park, gonna go across the ferry, ride around North Channel, South Channel, San Souci, we'll probably stop there for a while, and then ride our bikes back, so if anyone wants to partake on that, they're more than welcome. What it does, we kinda congregate at 6 o'clock, and we leave at 6:30, so we'll probably be hitting the ferry about, you know, 6:40-ish, so if you wanna tag on anywhere along the route, you're more than welcome. And other than that, there's just lots of stuff going on. I'm wishing Harsons Island Lions, well, thanking them for letting us use this, and their turkey shoot is coming up Labor Day weekend, too, so I hope they have a successful turkey shoot this Labor Day weekend, so it's a good thing. That's all I got. Oh yeah, we're doing the pancake breakfast, too, that's the Sunday from 9 to 1, am I right?
Yep.
And we're doing the pancake breakfast in the fire hall, so... All right, that all said, now it's time for public comments, do we have any public comments at this time? If you do, you just gotta say your name and address and have at it. No public comments? I'm shocked. Arnie, you okay, you feeling okay?
The only thing that I was gonna say, Arnie, is the assessor going to do something on these properties out here that are, they're spending a great deal of money on the sandbags, property value and so on and so forth. It seems when property goes up, the assessment goes up, but with this damage on the side, it may be three, four, five, six, seven years, we never know. Is there anything in the making, as you as a supervisor or as a township, that's going to do something to lower the assessments on some of these properties over there, because they're spending thousands and thousands of dollars to upgrade your property, and then when they do, they're gonna come along and reassess the value of it again, and I think that's asinine, I'm gonna tell you that right now.
For the assessing, well, they have to go through the Board of Appeal process, takes me out of it for sure, and assessing, am I right, Sheri? I mean, they're gonna...
Well, we're gonna be looking at them actually, you know, as, and we've been monitoring everything with the St. Clair County Emergency Management, so you know, we're asking people, submit, you know, if you have photos, because each property's been affected differently, so, but then there will be, once you get your assessment, obviously, there is a, it will indicate when the board of review meets and that if you're not satisfied, you know, but we are trying to address them as we go.
Right, so, yeah, we, I think we've had assessment teams out, what, three, four times?
Oh, yeah. We were with the county probably a total of seven days.
Right.
About three of those, four of those on the island.
So we visited, already visited, a lot of properties that are underwater or in danger that people called, and like we said, we told everyone, take pictures and document it and report it to us, so...
Well, it has to be done soon, because now, if you go before the board of review on hardship, that's a different story, that has nothing to do, they'll pay their taxes or won't pay them for them, one way or the other, but there's a lot of people out there that cannot claim hardship on income, but they need the hardship on the land and the property and the money that they're spending to have that relief.
Right, you go to the board of reviews if you think your valuation should be lower.
But it's gotta be done now, not five years from now, you understand what I'm saying?
No, I know, it'll be done. When's the board of review?
Yeah, nothing can be done for the 2019 assessments, those are already set, and those are based on your 2018, how your property was, but going forward for 2020 is what we're looking at, and those values aren't actually set until the first of the year, like February, and the board of review meets in March, so, you know, at now is the time, if you have documentation and that kinda thing, you know, we're asking to submit it to our...
You've got a lot of work to do.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. And now, thanks, Arnie. All right, any other public comments?
Well, I think we'll just speak up, I don't know if we really, this is the place to do it, we've never been to one of your meetings, so this is...
Oh, welcome. What's your name and address?
Ken and Nancy Joseph, and we're really representing my husband's parents, we're just a few doors down from the Lions Club.
Right on the other side of water tube diverter.
Okay.
Right, now that we know what it's called, the water tube diverter. And just like everybody else, we haven't been able to really do anything at the cottage, his parents haven't really been able to come up, as many I'm sure we haven't been able to. And this may just be coincidental, but it seems that once the Lions were able to divert some of the water away and make things better here, the backyard went up a few inches, now maybe that's just coincidental, but maybe we could learn about these water diverters and put them on their list and see what we can do, but there's nowhere for the, where did the Lions, I guess my question is, if any of you know, where did they take the water to, because there's really no low spot to run...
Right, well, the water over by your house is actually the river level, I mean, it may take a little while to adjust up or down, you know, you don't have the sharp increases or decreases like the river does or the bays for wind, but I mean, you're more than, we couldn't get that house, your house, but you're more than welcome to put piggy off of that and put diverters or sandbags or something U-shaped up to ours, and then you can pump out if you need, you're gonna, for it to work, you have to pump out, because the water will seep underneath, too.
Right, right. His mother just needed, but again, just as you were saying about putting money into it, well, you know, it's an old place, so just over the whole winter and fall, they added new lumber underneath to re-support the house and, you know, did a lot of work on the inside, so for that little cottage isn't worth a whole lot, but she probably put $20,000 into it just to, you know, and now, we wanna try to do something to keep it from rotting, you know, because it's just gotta sit there the whole summer, you know, spring, summer, and we, every time we come to do a little more work, well, now we got waders on, and then we saw that diverter tube between their cottage and the one next to it, we felt almost like we were being excluded, and we were left in the swamp. We said, well, who did this? You know? It was kind of a shock.
Right, and like I say, too, I mean, one problem we're having, we're praying that the water goes down enough that before it gets cold, because, you know, you can't pump when it's below freezing, and we have many roads still that, you know, we have plugs in the drains and we pump them out, and if we gotta unplug those pumps, you know, we're gonna have a bunch of ice sitting on top of the road, so we're talking about, well, what's our alternative, we couldn't build it up with stone, not really excited about putting gravel on top of paved roads, but we've done that in four or five spots already, and that's really the only alternative, so... Okay, any other public comments?
If you drive around the island with a water situation, you cannot believe where there was no cattails, or whether it was, especially the cattails, it seems like everything has gone right back to nature, just in rather about six months, it's unbelievable. I came down Middle Channel just before the store, over there on the, just over the tube coming from the DNR, he's got cattails already in his yard that high. It's amazing how nature has taken back, go look at the golf course, it doesn't even know if the golf course is there anymore, it's all nature.
Yep.
It's unbelievable.
We got lilac paths in people's yards, so... All right, anything else? Okay, moving along, the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of August 5th, 2019, check reports, treasurer's report, road watch, which I'm not sure if it's actually in there, thank you to, a thank you letter to Clay Township Fire Department from Sheriff Donlin, and a request to accept a $300 donation for sand from the Elginak Lions Club.
Support.
Okay, a motion is support, any discussion? I would actually like to mention, the $300 donation was nice from the Elginak Lions, they actually put that towards our emergency fund to help pay for sand for people, the township, so that was nice. I don't have it, you wanna read it? I have it, but I gotta dig for it. Go ahead.
So the letter from Sheriff Donlin was to Chief Rose, I would like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation from all the members of the St. Clair County Sheriff's Office. The collaboration between our departments during the search of a missing boater in the St. Clair River on July 12th, which continued for several days, was very much appreciated. According to initial reports, the boater identified as Riley Gleason was a 21-year-old who jumped from an anchored boat and showed signs of immediate distress. Riley's body was discovered six days later near Wapo Island. The Clay Township Fire Department responded and provided the St. Clair County Sheriff's Office with much-needed assistance during these difficult circumstances. Our dive team is just a 26-member volunteer organization, they work their normal 9-to-5 jobs, then headed to the waters of St. Clair River to conduct the search and rescue mission, logging over 700 hours. We really appreciate your staff for playing a key role in providing assistance in searching for Riley. If at any time we can be of assistance to your department, please do not hesitate to call on us. Sincerely, Sheriff Tim Donlin.
Okay, very good. Any more discussions, consent agenda? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. We don't have any unfinished business. First thing under new business is a Resolution 2019-21, adopting an emergency support plan. This is, I mentioned it in my supervisor's report. St. Clair County is requesting, the governor basically says that we are in a state of emergency, I'm gonna read the letter here, or parts of the letter, real quick. This was sent to her August 12th. Or, yes, to the governor. And it goes on, and the bullets are basically, as a result of the situation of the high water, the following conditions exist. As of August 12th, St. Clair County Road Commission identified $977,862 in expenses and loss of roadways related to the event. And I tell you what, probably three-quarters of that was in Clay Township. City of St. Clair, they said $268,000 municipal loss, that was damage to their waterfront, golf course, municipal wastewater treatment plant. City of Elginak has incurred approximately $921,386 after dealing with local emergency for flooding. Elginak received major damage to at least nine local roadways, as well as major intrusions and infiltration to the wastewater treatment plant. Clay Township, at that time, we put in $325,000, but actually, I just bumped it up to $450,000, it's gonna go higher after we, you know, deal with these fire hydrants and things. Damage is spent on estimated for local road damage, infrastructure protection since April 25th, 2019. Clay Township has protected multiple critical infrastructure points on Harsons Island, Clay Township Fire Station 2, and the Lions Hall where we're at today, as well as Clay Fire Station 1 on the mainland, where St. John's Marsh as well is encroaching as well. Funding has also been spent on infiltration and use of the wastewater treatment system, and our lift stations that were overcome by flooding waters, giving damage to the regional system. And then it goes on, IRA Township, they put in for $32,000 for mostly wastewater treatment And then, St. Clair County's requested dewatering pumps from MDOC, which was denied due to not having our governor's declaration on file. That's why we need a declaration on file, so we can get help from different state and federal agencies. Without the declaration, they said, no, can't help you. I know we were looking at fourteen, or a bunch of pumps, which we had to go out and buy to pump these roads down, and you know, MDOC has them sitting there, but they couldn't give them to us because of no declaration. So it goes on, and I... So it goes on and on, specifically, "We request the following state assistance to supplement local response and recovery efforts. Direct access to M.D.O. for flooding relief, response, mitigation, and recovery. Direct assistance from DNR for no wait law relief in flooding affected areas of the St. Clair County and its tributaries." So, this is for more, for next year, God forbid if we need it. And if she signs it, everyone says, "Can we make this no wait?" Well, without this order, she signs, "No, we can't." And other things, so it's gonna give us more leverage going forward next year. Are they gonna cut us a check for 450 grand? No, they're not gonna do that. That's not gonna happen. But like I say, it basically gives us more access to help down the road and more resources available to us. And also with the Corps of Engineers, we need this from her before we can contact resources with the Corps of Engineers. I've actually been developing plans, both on the mainland and on the island, like, you know, there's no reason why we couldn't block the culverts from La Croix all the way over to the other side of Narganza. You know, that's a chunk of land that would help a lot of people, and pump that whole area out with a big new watering pump. We have like three or four spots like that, that we could possibly do. And we have other ideas that we come up with between ourselves, the county, and the Corps of Engineers, so. That's that in a nutshell, does anyone have any questions or?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution 2019-21, adopting the emergency support plan from St. Clair County.
Support.
Okay, a motion and support, any more discussion or questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have, this kinda lays out the scope of services and a letter of our understanding of the services for our upcoming audit with Stuart Bouvet and Whipple. This is the same price as we've had for the last two years, $29,900. And believe me, they earn their money doing it. And I know Joanne can recall, what we used to spend on audits, we're north of, we're close to $100,000, am I correct, Joanne?
That's correct.
And, you know, we switched auditing companies and tightened up our ship a lot. And like I say, we got down to $30,000, so. Any questions or, well, I guess I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Stuart Bouvet and Whipple understanding of services audit for $29,900.
Support.
A motion to support, any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have a payment of our 2014 refunding bond, I believe it's $250,000 off the principal and $18,481 from, of interest. And, yep, that's what it is. This is for our water, actually, to bring water on Harson's Island and the backroads on the mainland.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2014 refunding bonds payment in the amount of $250,000 from 591-301, and $18,481 and 25 cents of interest from 591-990-995.
Support.
Hearing a motion to support, and if you recall, this fund was extremely underwater, like by, pardon the pun, so many different ways, by about a million bucks. And it was split up on three different bonds, we were paying between 7%, 5%, I think there was one that 4.8% or something. And it was crazy, we were paying that much interest, so, like, people refi their houses for cheaper interest. We did a refinance bond, and we sold the bond on the open market and, because Clay Township's pretty healthy, and we, just before we resold it, we got a D&amp;B rating of double A+, which is the golden standard for municipalities our size. And we resold the bond at 1.87% interest, saving us a ton of money. And instead of being underwater, we're even now. But hey, happy. So okay, we have motion to support, roll call, anything else? Roll call vote.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have the police DDTI maintenance agreement. This is a budgeted item under 207-768. Michael can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is the same amount we've been paying on this.
Yes.
And we needed to, it basically deals with our mapping and our tag system, and they do updates as maps change and everything else.
It also works with the assessing department, any properties, anything like that, this allows us to be able to, when there are any changes that the township needs us to do.
Can we put a layer, because we're gonna have shape files for all of our manholes and our water and sewer system, soon. So we can put to a layer on that too, right? And then fire hydrants, that might be cool.
Yep, we can do that.
Or I'll make a motion that we approve the DDTI maintenance contract for $1,875, coming from RIA 207-768.
Support.
Okay, a motion to support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Next we have the Ira Patrol, Police Patrol contract. This was, basically it's the same contract that, the numbers haven't changed, well, actually it's the same contract, but it's only for one year as opposed to three years. We've had discussions with Ira's legal team, and I don't disagree with them. They, they don't have any problems with any of the numbers or anything. They did have a newer attorney, and the attorney wanted to polish up some of the definitions on this contract. And quite honestly, I mean, we basically got this contract, what was it now, six years ago? They, the county was providing them police protection, we kinda took that contract and went off that, and that's how we got most of the wording. And at the time, our attorney blessed it, but we have a same law firm, but a new attorney, so it doesn't, it should be reviewed anyhow. So they were more comfortable doing a one-year contract, and let's check out some of the definitions and the things, and give the suits a little time to check it out. And since we're running out of time, that's, they decided to do a one-year as opposed to a three-year, so. That's what's before you now. Anybody have any, well, let's do a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Ira Police Contract for 2019 to 2020.
Support, a motion to support. And as I, you know, we talked about before, you know, before the Ira contract was based on part-time police, and it's hard, you can't, you gotta hire full-time police now. It's hard to retain any part-time police. And so the cost did go up, but you know what, it's a win-win situation. It puts more money in our budget, and it gives them darn good police protection, so. Okay, we have a motion to support, do we have any discussion?
Yeah. Chief, what would be a reasonable timeframe for them to start looking into the renewal of this contract?
Well, I've been in talks with them, and as far as that goes, I think it won't be too long here, we'll end up starting to talk about that. Ari and I both discussed as well some of the things in here that we would like to see changed, some of the things that need to be cleaned up a little bit on our end as well. And I think that's kinda where it came into play with mutual understanding that, I think everybody was busy with the flooding, the high water, everything, nobody had the time to dedicate to sitting down with this. So that's why it's kind of a mutual thing, let's just kinda, we'll give ourselves a year here, we'll have plenty of time, and we'll meet and get this thing taken care of. So, and like we say, it's not an issue of costs or anything like that, it's just some of the wording itself in the contracts that were first proposed, that we wanna clean up a little bit, we wanna clean it up on our end as well.
Yeah.
And you know, it's obviously a work in progress, and it's something that, you know, we're pretty impet in, into the process of it. So, some of the things we've learned along the way are some of the things that we would like to change up a little bit, I think that'll work for both them and us. So, but, and we've got a great working relationship with them, so.
That's good. I'm just concerned about the asset allocation, and specifically the new officers that you've had to bring in, the new equipment, vehicles, and for a one-year contract, I would just like, you know, maybe some support from Ira, leading up to the closure date of the contract, just to see where we have to go with those resources, and whether or not they have to be reallocated.
And, you know, they did, they did bump their mill jump this last time to support this, went before their people, it did pass, that's one of the things that helped support this, and that's why we went forward with the way we did. Because basically it was, you know, I went to them and I said, "Listen, the way we're going, and the way it is trying to find employees now, trying to find part-time employees, it used to be no problem." I'd get a lot of good retired guys that wanted to come out and do some part-time work afterwards. Well, in our society, a lot of these retired guys are not getting back into this business anymore. And trying to hire any new young kids just coming aboard, what's happening is, all we're doing is training them up for the next person to pull them out and hire them full-time. So, we're dumping good money after bad as far as that goes. So that's why we sat down, figured out, okay, where can we be in here on numbers by hiring two part-time people opposed to three to four, or I'm sorry, two full-time people opposed to three or four part-time people to cover this? Then at that point, we know we are covered with our shifts, we're not juggling around, we don't have people leaving, and we're trying to, you know, put all pieces together to fill these shifts, which is tough. It's really tough. Now this right here is gonna make it way more manageable.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else? Another thing, I mean, I, I'm just guessing, we'll probably have a new contract for us in three, four months.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna take long. It's just a point of getting everybody to sit down. I mean, everything we've talked about already, I mean, there's no friction on either side, we both understand, you know, they understand what we're looking at, and we understand what they're looking at both ways. And I think what it was, we all looked at and went, "Okay, instead of kicking this can down the road, let's just give ourselves, we'll give it a year, and then we'll work on that as quick as we can, and we'll be ready to go come for this next audit."
Yeah, I guess if they put the millage forward, they improve the millage.
And that was one of the things kinda holding up too, because you had to wait and see where that was gonna go as well.
Right.
So, you know, yeah, we had a lot of talks in, but the talks don't do a lot of good until you know if you're gonna be able to fund it. Once that got into play, then we started getting into the high water and everything else that came with it, which made things even more difficult. So, we wanted to just, we wanted, instead of taking another three-year out like we've had the last two times, let's just do this a year, and then let's all sit down at the table, and let's make, let's make it to where each side's happy with everything sitting in front of us.
That's good. And that millage did pass overwhelmingly too, we have a lot of support in Ira, that's great for our police department as well. Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Hey, we're at board member comments. Cindy, you have something?
I do not, I just wanna thank everybody for coming out today, hope the rest of your summer is dry.
That's great to see this massive crowd out here for change. But thank you. Nothing to report from the planning commission, next meeting is on the 28th.
It's been a stressful time for all of us, and the water started going down, and then, boy, we got land-baseded last night. Plus, the electric went out for many of us on the island. So, me there too, but we're strong, we'll hang in there, we'll, you know, weather the storm, so it's nice to see all of you here too. Just keep pumping your yards and filling those sandbags, hoping for the best, we'll get better.
Thank you. Sandy?
I just wanna thank everyone for coming out, and wish everyone a safe and happy holiday, and we'll see you in September.
How's our, can I get a quick update on our building official? How's that working out?
Yeah, I don't think this is a real spot for it, but he's doing fine.
I've heard some, some good comments on the street.
Yeah.
So I've wondered, you've also gotten some positive feedback by our official.
Yeah, I'm actually gonna introduce him in one of our newsletters, like I've done with the new co-enforcement officer. So actually, he's got some challenges, but he's made a lot of headway too.
Fantastic, that's all I have.
I guess this'll be my twice-a-month reminder that summer taxes are due on Monday, September 16th.
She always, she says, "I hate having to tell people that." Yeah, like what Joanne said, you know, we'll get, we'll get through the storm, and I've taken a new mantra, mantra or whatever you call it, a saying, you know, "Tough times don't last, but tough people do." And we're tough, so. Like to remind you, it's hard to sleep, but in a couple weeks, school's gonna start, so hush out for the kids and everything, we already have football and sports going on at the schools. And, and again, you know, with this high water, be careful, be safe around the water, you know. I recommend, don't even go swimming in marinas, because you can get electric shock, or where there's lots of boats. I've got personal experience on that, and, but, and on the other note, there's just lots of good positive stuff going on. You know, we got the turkey shoot, the week before that on the island is the Sportsman's, I'm not sure exactly what they call it, do you remember? They're doing duck calling and swap and everything at the DNR field office, that's always a good event. Just got lots of stuff, I know I'm like double and triple booked, it's like, can't do it all. So that's a good thing. Our next meeting is actually Tuesday, because it's Labor Day, September 3rd, 7 o'clock at the Township Hall. Other than that, does anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you for coming, everybody.